He did all of this. Well, no.
Melinda, feel ladies in prayer. Here is the question.
Heavenly fathers, thank you for this rain, we got, I don't know if everybody needed it, but it was good to have it for us. Please watch over our families as we travel back and forth through this parish and out of it. And thank you, God, for all that you've done for us. Please watch over us and help guide us during this meeting in Jesus' name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Randy Rens.
Here.
Beau Barton. Melinda Ballard.
Here.
Baron Glass.
Here.
Maria Bass.
Here.
Gary Castles.
Here.
Johnny Fallon.
Here.
All right, first on the agenda is the executive committee report. Johnny, can you?
All the checks checked out good. We are twenty-seven percent over from last year on our taxes, our sales tax. So we had some late revenue come in, so we're really doing really well considering what we thought.
All right. To be approved of minutes for the board meeting on May twenty-eighth.
Let me make a motion we approve in a second.
All in favor? Yeah, the eight, the twenty-eighth, and June fourth.
Yeah, I make a motion we approve all of the different meetings, executive and policy. All of the meetings.
All in favor? All right, that brings us to the employee of the month, who is Sammy Newton.
Good evening, everyone. Have your summer. Ms. Tammy, would you join me up here? Y'all know we do this every month, we recognize an employee who has gone above and beyond, and we're happy to recognize Ms. Tammy Newton. Phrases to describe you, hard worker, dependable, patient, all-around wonderful person. And great role model for our children. I think that is high praise indeed. Says Tammy is always willing to help out her fellow school bus drivers. She will sometimes pick up the elementary kids in the afternoon for a substitute driver and bring them to the high school. She was asked this year to add a couple of extra pickups to her route on the north side of the river and graciously took on the extra task. She is a twenty-two-year veteran school bus driver that is a pleasure to have as part of the transportation department. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Tammy Newton.
Dee, dress code policy. Believe the committee met on that?
Yeah, yeah, we met, but Nick, I'll let you explain.
I will.
Go over what we did and what we didn't do, and why we arrived here, what we're gonna do from this point on.
So, you know, I have a superintendent teacher advisory council, and we meet quarterly starting in July. And so at our main meeting, we always go over the district initiatives and how those are in the schools, how they actually look and playing out, and what changes we need to make. And so at the end, I leave it open for anything else they want to discuss, and the topic of dress code came up, and they felt very passionate about it, and so I was like, okay, this is not a decision I make, it's a decision the board makes, and we'll have to go to the policy committee, and they said, when, when, where do we go? So I'm gonna let Dana Patton, who is a teacher at the high school, present on behalf of the advisory council.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak. As teachers, we want to start by saying that we truly appreciate the intention of allowing students to wear sweatshirts and hoodies over their school uniform. The goal of helping students be warm and be comfortable in their bodies is something we absolutely support. At the beginning of the school year, everything was going very well. But as time went on, students started testing the boundaries of the dress code. It became more and more difficult for us to manage what was acceptable and what was not. Some hoodies had writings and sayings that weren't appropriate for school, and it wasn't always clear to us until later on in the day which ones were not okay. Even more concerning is that we had students in hoodies and they failed to wear a uniform shirt under those hoodies, but that's not easy to check, to catch on one inspection some days. What started as a good idea has unfortunately turned into a daily challenge for teachers who feel like they are constantly correcting students, which isn't a role that we would like to play. And during our meeting, I would like to add, it was brought up about administrators, and I don't have experience at every school, but I have been teaching in our district for eighteen years, and I've had the pleasure of being at two of our schools, CPGH, the junior high and the high school. And our administrators are, I have early morning duty, I always have, because I'm an early bird. I'm there early, and our administrators are there before I get there, and they're still there when I leave. And there's not enough time in the day for them to do everything. I know it's not always, but discipline, morale, all of that starts in the classroom with the teacher. For both our students and our staff, we're asking for you to consider adding a single dark gray hoodie or sweatshirt with our school's C logo on the left corner as an official part of the uniform. We would like to also propose that we add a dark gray t-shirt and a long-sleeved t-shirt to be added. These items could be worn any school day and would clearly show that a student is in dress code. Then, on designated spirit days, we could, the student would be allowed to wear any spirit shirt that represents their school or their team, like baseball, robotics, beta, cheerleading, and so on. This change would give students the comfort and the style that they're looking for while making it much easier for teachers to quickly recognize if a student is in dress code or not. We're also asking that these items be put out for bid so that they could be sold through the school at an affordable price. And we understand that not every family may be able to afford these items. So we'd love to explore sponsorship ideas through local businesses, through supportive parents, and even we had a coach who suggested that donating some of the football game revenue, the gate revenue from each game. We really believe this is a fair, balanced solution, one that benefits students, families, and staff alike. Thank you for considering our proposal.
You have a graphic there that shows what they're proposing, so I'll pull that up for you, just so everyone can see. So, um, so the red, navy, and white polo shirt would still be the uniform, and the same bottoms, the khaki, the navy, and the jeans that were added a few years ago. It'd just be easier if it's one to note, because one red sweatshirt may not have the right C. There are different colors of red, there's orange, red, pink red, faded, you know, all the different colors. So this dark gray would be consistent, and that's kind of like what it would look like. Of course, it would have the C here, but that dark gray is easy to.
Is the teacher's gonna enforce this? Is the teacher's gonna enforce this? Because as I recall, I ask and ask and ask, oh, it's going good, it's going good, but nothing, I mean, it wasn't.
And you may be able to, from what I gathered, it started out okay. And then, when the cold weather came in, in the, when we had all those winter days, and the principals tried to give, and y'all couldn't sleep too, I mean, you try to give a little leniency, and then it was hard to rein them back in to not wearing all that.
So what makes this gonna make it that any easier?
I know, for, I mean, I'm just thinking, I mean, the other options, you had so many different colors, and then the size of the logo, you know, and so there were so many options, it was hard to like, okay, now what was the policy? Okay, is that blue, is that red, is that, is the logo big enough, is it the right size, is it, you know, so there was just a lot of options, a lot of, you needed a board chart.
Yeah. If it this, then that, then this, then that, it was very complicated.
As a parent, I mean, it was confusing for me to figure out what I could and could not do.
What I understood from the policy meeting that we had was that when you check the kids in the morning, the elementary wasn't so bad, but the high school, junior high, they were having to do this, or they were gonna do this, and it was just easier for them if we've got this one, and they can look at it and just check off that box with one glance instead of having to read fifteen different things before they could go to the scan and the wand and stuff.
I got a question. So a kid that has a jacket of his own, there's zips, he can still wear that?
Excellent, absolutely. Just as long as it zips all the way or buttons all the way, because like she said, what would happen is they may wear a red hoodie, and then you would find out after a couple days, they don't even have a uniform shirt under it, and that red hoodie may be an appropriate one, or it may have horse light on it. But they didn't get caught when it came in, because you're just looking at red and not necessarily looking at the logo.
They don't have to buy these.
They do not have to.
If they have a jacket, they can wear the jacket they got.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. And that's gonna be, communication, I think, is going to be key, is that we're giving more options, and the only thing that's being taken away is what you gave at the beginning was any hoodie.
So basically, it's just they can still wear hoodies, but it's gotta be this gray?
Yeah.
And they don't have to wear a uniform shirt under that hoodie?
If it's that gray, they don't even have to wear the uniform shirt under it.
Apparently, you don't have to wear it under all four of the grades.
That's right.
That's right.
So they can wear any shirt under it?
None.
They don't have to wear a shirt.
Like that gray shirt, that would be, that would be the uniform. That gray short-sleeved shirt with the C is a uniform shirt now.
But the hoodie on the end, they'd probably wear a shirt under it.
They could, yeah, but, you know, they don't have to have a collared uniform shirt on under it.
And that C in the collar, it in the collared shirt.
Yeah, and the seat's not that big, I just did that there so you could see.
But that's where y'all gonna run into, run into, so they're gonna start wearing uncollared blue, and uncollared red, and uncollared white now. They're gonna test it that way, and then we're gonna wanna know if we can wear uncollared blue, and uncollared red, and uncollared white. No way I would get it. I mean, I would, that's what I'd do. I'd do it right now.
I don't doubt that.
Yeah, I don't see where, you know, not being able to wear something, you could wear anything up underneath your hoodie?
You just could take your hoodie off, you know.
Because you're gonna have problems like there.
And so as long, and I mean, I'm not, I have a kid who wants to wear a hoodie all the time. He never takes his hoodie off.
Hoodies are the biggest, once you get, I don't know about elementary, I'm speaking from junior high and high school experience, hoodies are the biggest area, there's, and that's where they push it, they push it, they push it, they push it. If we could, I mean, quite frankly, I would love as a teacher to say, you can't wear a hoodie, period, but that's not acceptable. I mean, many of these, many of our students, they're comfortable in that, they were a little oversized, I understand that. And I don't wanna take that away from them at all, but hoodies are the biggest area of concern when it comes to dressing.
If we don't pass this particular hoodie, we have to take hoodies away.
Correct.
That way, it would be easier on you guys. That's my opinion.
It just causes stress. And what I heard, and they talked about this there too, is you meet a student at the door, and immediately it's a, "Good morning, you're out of dress code." And then you're going to class upset, and you're focusing on those things. And what you really wanna be able to do is focus on the teaching. And so the idea is there, that, you know, and I think Coach Prim talked about having extras, you know, there, having the extra uniform shirts. If you come in, it's easy, you can trade me yours, and I'll give you this one, I hang on to this. You know, just kind of work that out so that you don't get through the door with something that you're not supposed to.
Where are you gonna get the extra?
That's where Coach Prim talked about using, you know, he said, "I'd be willing to give ten percent of my football gate to help do this," because it's such a stressful thing for them to deal with.
And you don't have to put them in a hoodie. You don't have to exchange a hoodie for another hoodie. You could put them in a uniform shirt that you have in your clothes closet. And that was another thing we talked about, is though our clothes closets look kind of bare at this time of the year, every year at the beginning of the year, I know I myself, I clean out Blake's closet, and everything, all the sizes that are appropriate go to where they need to go, and a lot of people do that. And so you use those clothes closets, so if somebody does come in, in an inappropriate, you just take their inappropriate shirt, put them in a polo, and then you exchange at the end of the day before they get on the bus.
Maybe.
Elementary, we do, it's pretty easy.
That wouldn't be, I don't think that would work for junior high and high school though. I don't think they would get in the back of your shirt, do you?
I mean, somewhat, we, if kids have ripped jeans, there's gonna be, I have mixed feelings about it, because just as being there for so long, you're gonna have kids walk in with the wrong hoodie, and they're gonna say, give you this sob story, and somebody feels sorry for them, and it's the homeroom teacher's responsibility. And instead of saying, "You have to take that hoodie off, you're not in the appropriate hoodie," they let them wear it, they get away with it, then the next person says, "Well, they let them wear it, so I can wear it, and so that's okay." And then that's where they get into the stretching of the limits. Dana and I worked together for years, she knows that, and she can agree with me, that there are gonna be some people, it's very hard to be consistent among teachers by checking dress code, you know, but then it's not fair to the people at the doors to police that. It should be the homeroom teacher's responsibility, or the first period teacher's responsibility. So I've never, I don't think there's ever gonna be a perfect solution, but what I am concerned with is continuously changing the dress code. Like, we've been through this three years now, we gotta stick with it and be done with it, because we have more important things to do, you know, than worry about all the things. I mean, last year, we took on cell phone take-ups, we did security, I mean, all of these things, and then you're having to police this and that, the attire, I'm just glad they're there, you know, at some point. And so we provide these clothes and these hoodies, and we provide all these things, but I don't really know if doing this is gonna, it may, some kids will appreciate it, but not all are going to appreciate it or follow it every single day. They're gonna test you every single day.
That's what daily dress code.
Exactly. With any, and so I don't think there's a perfect, there's never gonna be a perfect world. I'm not for it, and I'm not against it, I just feel like we've gotta set something and be done with it and move on, you know?
I feel like, I mean, I'm in the same boat as a mom and as a principal. I took this proposal home to my kids, and they're, we have friends and girlfriends at the house, and, I mean, it was split down the middle. We had some that were like, oh, well, that's good, and then the girls were like, no, they're taking away my options, and I, I just bought a nice black sweatshirt, I'm not gonna be able to wear it, and then I, I, you know. So, I mean, that's coming from students, but then also as a principal, it's, like Delinda said, it is hard to police, okay, red, blue, black, white, three inches, but if it's four inches, do I send the eight-year-old home? Do I call the parents, because it's really a four-inch that's got SpongeBob and not a Nike check? What's the difference between, the learning difference between SpongeBob and a Nike check, he's here, at least, thankfully. You know, so it's kind of hard to, it's hard to decipher. I agree. Especially with the little ones too, you know, a lot, I mean, a lot of parents put them in whatever they have, especially on a cold day, you know, and so it was hard for me to go and tell, you know, this six-year-old, go take your hoodie off, and that may be the only thing they have at the moment, you know, so it, I mean, it's, not that we don't wanna follow the policy, but like she said, sometimes we're just glad they're at school, you know. There was split families too, and I can recall, last few weeks of school, we had a child show up in a non-approved hoodie, and he did have some khaki shorts on, and we called the mom, because we don't know where they are week to week, called the mom, and she said, well, he's been at his dad's, and I guess that's all the clothes they have. And he went to his dad's a day early, and I guess that's all the clothes he had. I apologized, but it took her a couple hours to get up there, but then at that point, it's like, it's ten o'clock, I mean, this specific hoodie has not affected his learning, and he's here, he's doing his job. So it's just, it's, I work at junior high, it's hard to police at junior high, those kids will be in dress code first hour and second hour there, and total different something. So I get it, it's just an all-around battle that you're always going to face.
I think too.
But this doesn't solve that problem.
Brenda, I've said here, and listen, and I've dealt with this for thirty-two years. It's been a policy after policy after policy after policy. There's no consistency. This person's gonna enforce it, the other person's not. That's where your problem is coming in at. Ms. Johnny asked the appropriate question. I like what you said, Katie, which is specifically were, I'm at, I'm in favor. I said the last time that if this policy came back, that I would make a motion to ban whatever we needed to ban, and just go back and make it as simple as possible, because it. Because if the kid is at school, which is the most important, you guys don't have time to be looking at if it's two inches, three inches, four inches, if it's this red, if it's that red. If it's this gray, if it's that gray, among all this other stuff that we have. So what I'm interested in now is what's the least amount of issues that we can put out now? So you guys can be done with, cause otherwise I'm voting no regardless, other than to give you guys something that you can do, that you can use at your school, so you don't have to come back here. We just dealt with this eighteen months ago, we just dealt with it two or three years ago. It's every year, somebody's not happy. This group is not satisfied with it, so they're not gonna enforce the policy. This group is satisfied with it, so they're gonna do what they need to do. You guys don't have time to deal with that and it's time for the board to do what they need to do, which is make a policy that you guys can follow and be done with it. Cause I'm tired of it, case in point.
I agree.
Yeah, so I, I will give you guys an opportunity to tell me what you want, I'll make a motion, whether passed or not is not on me. But I will do that for you guys because you shouldn't have to come here every year worrying about this, that, thus and so. If the kid is coming to school, you guys are saying, we don't care if they have torn jeans, as long as they're at school. And sometimes that's all they have. This, uh, uniform and all this other stuff, I think we're policing too much. I, I think we've gotten to the point where we're trying to tell people what they should or shouldn't do, when we should be teaching them. But we can't teach them because we're doing all this other stuff. So, uh, I'm prepared either way, but I'm not gonna vote for this policy in its current form, but I'm only one person.
If it's not inappropriate, I don't think it should be, I'm a policeman myself. I, I'm not for uniforms, y'all, y'all already know that already, never have been. So.
Cause whatever we do, we have to do it tonight because they have to be given sixty days, I guess, to react to whatever it is y'all need to react.
So what, I mean, it's all been taken.
So this is what y'all are presenting to us, right? This is what the high school wants and the junior high wants?
I had, so I had the teachers who worked on this from the advisory council were from Columbia Elementary, Central Elementary, the junior high and the high school. They came together and asked for one designated hoodie. And then add those to expand your uniform options. Of course, like Melissa said, when I had this, was sitting on my table and my boys came in, they're like, what is that? And I said, well, that's a proposed they're doing, he said, well, can I buy one of each? And I was like, and mine were fine, you know, they don't care, they just wanna throw something on your school, you know. The fact that even where jeans don't have tucked your shirt in is great with them. But even they were trying to push the limits at the end because they were like, everybody else is getting away with it. Because they're tired of trying to police over and over. So, I mean, to, to me, it's a good compromise because it's just saying, we acknowledge you wanna wear a hoodie. If you wanna wear a hoodie, this is the one you wear, you know. And if you don't, then just make sure it zips all the way up or bones all the way up. Nice.
So I'm, I'm hearing some of y'all saying, do we really wanna have uniforms?
I've been saying that for a long time though.
That's scary.
We, we don't have a uniform, we have a dress code. If we had a uniform policy, we would tell them what shirt, belt, pants, brand, socks.
We could tell them what color, just square color.
Uh, you would even have to buy it from a certain store, that's a uniform policy, we have a dress code. If you tell me it's not a part of my job. To get to, to police a uniform. From a teacher's perspective, I'm happy, I don't, I'm, I really truly, bottom line, if they're there, I'm excited. That's all I care about. But when we sign our contract with this board, we're given our job duties. And our job duties are to police that dress code.
But, but the job duty was to do that, but I heard some say that it's not consistent, so that means that somebody's not doing what they signed up to do. So what I'm trying to do is make it easier, easiest possible. So you guys can focus on the kids that's in the classroom with the least amount of parents, I can't say what I wanna say. Uh, I N G, about what's not taking place. Now, whatever motion they make, I'm gonna make a substitute motion to just get rid of uniform, dress code the way we're gonna call it. Whether it gets a second or not, I don't really care, but that's what I'm gonna do. So, uh, you guys need to tell me what you want and I'm gonna support you. And when I tell you I'm gonna support, I'm gonna support you, cause I'm tired of the same old thing over and over and over, me personally.
Well, I mean, you know, I don't, I don't like, you know, people saying that everything's going good, the uniforms is going good, phones are going good. And it's not really going good. I mean, that to me is people telling me a lie, that everything is going great.
Well, I, I think Ms. Johnny, I had that same perception, I think Nikki, maybe Alana. They said that it started like the last two months, cause I was PO'd about it myself. Because we ask every meeting, is everything okay? Is everything okay, which we would like to have honesty. If we, if I ask you, I wanna know what the truth is, not what the superintendent's telling me, what you guys are telling me. So Nikki, what? Are you, cause you gotta enforce this. And I think there's enough here now that would ban all of this. And we need to do something, but I don't wanna be hasty with it. But what I do want to do is give them the opportunity to teach in the classroom and eliminate all this other stuff. Because we're always talking about growth goals, test scores and all that other stuff. You can't focus on that if you focus, focus on how long somebody's shirt is, or what color pants they got on, what color shoes they got on. Again, like I told you, if I was in school, I would hate you because this is what I wear. So I would hate you on any policy if I couldn't wear what I wanted to wear, as long as it was decent and in order. So Nikki, you guys, you tell us what you want, I think at this point you might get it. So, you know, you better speak now, better hold your peace. Because I think there's a consensus and I can read pretty well, that if you guys wanna eliminate this, it can be eliminated tonight.
I will say, I am the only person sitting on this board that did wear uniforms at Colwell Parish School. And I was there when they started it and this is nice compared to what I had.
I had to buy uniforms and you couldn't have tags, you couldn't have.
So I, I have a feeling about uniforms, I've never been on board.
But you know, it took us about twelve months, six to twelve months to, to do this policy when we did it. So, again, this is my last time asking, you know. Katie, I think you got enough courage and speed, what, what would you like to see? Well, I know Melissa would too, so.
It's devil's advocate.
Well, you gotta choose a side.
Because when you say don't have a uniform, then you're opening other issues like.
Such as?
Ripped jeans, holes everywhere, I mean, right, right.
Then you're really talking about policing, you start having a dress code.
No, I mean, there was stupid rules, like no holes in your, no ripped jeans, no crop tops, no inappropriate wording. I mean, those are things that come to my mind that.
Well, when I was in school, we were on eleven where shorts. Like you had to wear jeans or pants, you had to wear long pants, you could not wear any shorts. And so, of course, you're, I'm sure the shirt had to be appropriate, you know, and, and all the things. And you couldn't show a midriff and you couldn't show cleavage and no muscle shirts and stuff. So yes, if we were to go to no uniform, we're gonna have to sit down and say, okay, what do we want our dress code policy to be? You're gonna still be fighting dress code issues. Because kids are going to push the limits no matter what we decide to do.
And when they push the limit, then there should be a punishment for pushing that limit. We know what common sense is, we know what's appropriate, we know what's not appropriate. If they come to school and you deem them as the leader inappropriate, then we should have to support that, that's simple. Excuses are not gonna get us where we need to be at, we need to go and do something. And again, I'm ready.
So is it an age difference? Because I hear in elementary schools seem to say it's okay, that y'all are good.
It's really not as, as big of an issue and I've been in both worlds and at junior high, I've never been in high school, but junior high, it's a battle. Elementary, it's not as much of a battle with the children, but you have to think about, is your. Seven, eight, nine-year-olds at my school and they're not, some of them aren't dressing themselves.
They're not dressing themselves.
Not only that, they're dressing, they are getting up and doing, getting, putting on what they have, you know. We do have some whose parents still help them, but it's not as much of a battle in elementary. Our main battle is they just at the end of the school year decided to quit wearing uniforms. And that was at all three schools, they just took their free dress and decided, well, today's free dress day. And that's kinda what we, we battled towards the end. It's not so much the hoodies, for the most part, your families are wearing or in, in buying the proper items. And you've got a couple of students who maybe have a three-inch hoodie, a three-inch logo, it might have been a four-inch something, but.
But we're gonna provide that hoodie for them if they can't afford it, right?
Okay, that sounds great. But we send something home with a child today and it doesn't come back tomorrow and nobody knows where it's at. It's in the cousin's friend's car that left and don't know who they are. So it happens so much.
Well, how you gonna afford that?
Well, we probably talked about that and we were like, you give them like the hoodie, you give them a hoodie, then the next time you give them one of the shirts, one of the polo shirts. Because of the expense and the polo shirt was probably free, but the hoodie you had to buy. The next year, the hoodies would probably be turned in, just like the red, white and blue polo shirts, because the kids have grown them.
Well, I know that when we have kids that, you know, they're at dad's house, but they, you know, they stayed with whoever. And they came to school in the wrong uniform shirt, we would see if we had a shirt or not. And so if they, if we did, we sent them to the gym to get a shirt. If not, they would have lunch at the gym because they were out of dress code. But that went back to the teacher. Like, is the teacher gonna put them on the list? Because I think in some ways, they felt like it's not a discipline issue, it's a don't have the clothes issue. So they didn't wanna punish, but the policy says that's what they should do. So it just put teachers in a very bad position, you know, and it, and it just does. I mean, but either way, there's going to be issues, it doesn't matter, it's just pick your battle, which one do you wanna battle?
All right, what, what battle is it that y'all wanna pick?
So Katie, let me ask you and Melissa this, if all of us were students in here now, is there anybody in there that's inappropriate dressed to come to school in here now? Y'all could call a name.
I mean, Maria's in sleepless.
So that, that would be inappropriate, so we know they should, they should become sleepers. Okay, what else?
That's already in all of those.
That's right, right, so that's what I'm saying, we really don't have an issue like we say we do. We just have to narrow down what we need to, to put in a policy that they can enforce. Cause again, we spent twenty-five, thirty minutes talking and we hadn't gotten anywhere because it's complicated. So we, we might have to do something, but I think it's best that you guys do it rather than me, cause I'm not there. But I'm here to support you if you tell me what it is that you want versus going all the way to the extreme.
That's what I wanted to clear up, is this what y'all want? Is this what you want?
I want something that is easier for me to recognize and be able to not have to, that's gonna be easier to recognize.
Then it's the way the policy stays.
My honest opinion is I wanna educate these kids and love them, I don't care as long as they're there. But if you tell me my job is to enforce the policy, that's what I'm gonna do. And I am tired of being the mean teacher and I am because.
Cause she's a rule follower.
Because I'm a rule follower and I tell them, you can't wear that, take it off. And, but if you ask my honest opinion, sorry, I, I don't care about dress code either, I want that student at school.
And see Nikki, I can, I can value what you're saying and I applaud you for saying what you're saying, cause I think most teachers probably feel it with you. I think from my perception that you guys are wanting us to do something to help you. I think it's the board's time now to do what you guys are asking us to do. Uh, I think if, if it was something that was a little bit less stringent than that, you would be okay with it, right?
Correct. I would, I would be personally fine with that. Because like I said, I'm there to educate and love and support the kids. Regardless of what they're wearing, some are gonna push the envelope and wear the wrong thing. But I do want, if we're gonna have a dress policy like this, I want something that is easier for me to recognize and tell them immediately. You're in the wrong thing, it's easy to spot, they're not gonna get away with it days in a row. And everybody consistently does it. So we just said hoodies, just leave it like it is. And the only thing that you could have on your hoodie is to see, like, like a spirit thing. Would that be, you know, you can't wear any of the other hoodies with LSU or any of that stuff on it. But you would just wear the hoodies with the Caldwell and just leave up the hoodies colors like they are now. Would that make it simpler to check them in and work and stuff? Except for you have fifteen hundred colors of red that they think is okay, fifteen hundred colors of blue that they think is okay. I mean, I had a student who adamantly insisted that his baby blue hoodie, Nike hoodie was okay. It says navy and royal blue, that baby blue, okay.
So no, it's not gonna make it easier.
It's not gonna make it easier.
Well, you're going down a rabbit hole here, we just, we need somebody to make a motion that we, so we can vote on this. Either make a motion to approve this, that, that force, please. So we can vote on this, yea or nay?
All my commotion that we vote on this policy is it stated here. I second it.
I'm gonna offer substitute motion to, uh. How do I wanna put it? Gary, help me out.
Leave away with uniforms is what I would do.
The, uh, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna offer substitute motion to eliminate the dress, the, the Calwell Parish current policy relative to the dress code. And create something else that's gonna be one hundred percent signified and in relation to what these administrators and teachers are asking Calwell Parish school board to do. And Kaylee, I wanted it, I wanted worded specifically that way, so that's my substitute motion.
I'll second it. We need to vote on the second, the, the substitute motion first.
Yeah, Kaylee, give me a real call for it.
So I'm gonna make sure I understand what the motion is, or we, we, I'm not voting. To, to do away with this dress code policy.
The current policy that the Calwell Parish school board is enacting.
Yeah, and, and come up with a plan that is probably more like free dress, but with restrictions.
No, we didn't say that, no, we didn't say that.
You didn't, okay, you didn't.
So prior to voting.
I'm, I'm open to that if, if you guys are open to it. Again, whatever.
I think that's even enforced.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I don't, I, my thing is, if you're gonna have it, you need to enforce it.
It is not going.
It don't matter from the first day of school to the last day of school. So, I mean, it's what, I, I mean, I, I'm for free dress. Uh, if y'all want it, but that's you guys.
So that, look, we're not, we're not talking free dress, we're talking about.
Well, I'm talking about.
Well, we're having a discussion on this motion, not, not any other motion. Having a discussion on this motion, let's stay with this motion.
Your motion, Mary, that's his motion. His motion is free dress, that's why I wanted to.
And that's why I feel like if we do, if this passes, that we're gonna come up with something else, like you said in your motion. We do need to have another policy meeting to discuss that prior to. We'll be up to the policy meeting, the committee to figure that out and present it to you guys.
Do we have time?
So our current policy says that we have to notify parents sixty days, um, ahead. And that's why I told them, when you come, we've gotta do it in June because sixty days is at the beginning of, of school. Now, Mary, you've been here for a while, so if we do away with this dress code and it's more of a free, do we have leniency on that sixty days?
That's why I did not wanna complicate it, because this, this is gonna complicate it, because we're gonna fall outside of the sixty days, which will be violation, you know, the policy. I can rescind that if that's something that you guys can go with, cause we don't need to complicate it. But I'm just ready to get rid of it because we've had two of them promised.
Why don't we, uh, see how this works?
See how it works.
Well, we would.
But then we're gonna require people to buy things.
Well, that's true.
Well, they're gonna be required to buy things anyway.
But things that they may not.
If we go back to the old dress code, I mean, the old, so.
Could you not say, could you not say free dress and then we can define what that means?
That's just it. We're not doing free dress, we're not debating free dress right now.
There it is.
No, that ain't what it's.
That is what it is.
They can all come to school in what we're wearing right now.
Except for me, I'm not.
Except for Maria.
Except for Maria.
Ser- seriously, uh, I don't have a problem going to that, but I'm wise enough not to be that stupid. So what I am saying is I'm trying to get the board to look at that this has been an issue for so long. We need to do something. We need to do it now. This should be the last option and opportunity that we have to do it. So I'm willing to be uh flexible uh with regards to what we do. I just want to make sure that it's speaking what you guys are wanting and that you guys can enforce, that you guys feel comfortable at school where you can educate these kids. Because I think we're just missing a a part of that. Now, uh, again, I told you guys that this will probably pass. And I don't want to complicate the sixty day uh, you know, timeframe. Uh, now, if if we did it, uh, it doesn't have to go into effect immediately. I mean, it doesn't have to. Uh, Nick, you tell me what you want.
You could always wear last year's uniform. Yes.
That's true.
Yeah, you could always wear last year's uniform.
That's another motion that somebody could put forward is just stay with what we have. And don't worry about changing.
But I think, I think what you guys are saying, staying with what you have now is not working.
The hoodies are not working the way it is now.
The pulvers, that's the issue.
I'd be very happy. I, yeah. My kids, my kids are gonna wear blue jeans in the future.
Did you rescind your motion or?
Well, I I haven't yet, but I will.
Just be clear, if if you want free, if you want. Just be clear. And we can, we can work to to come up with guidelines that are consistent with what it was before the the uniform, which has evolved into a dress code policy.
And you're okay with that?
I'm fine with it.
You you guys okay with that?
Okay, doing what now? Say that again?
Well, what we're gonna do is.
The dress code policy.
Yeah.
To do away with what works.
Right, we're we're just gonna redefine entire dress code policy.
Redo it?
Yeah.
Complete.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm making work with that.
Which would allow students to wear clothing of their choice as long as it's within within the limits that we've.
Right.
And and the limits are gonna be no sleeveless, no muscle shirts, no midriff, no holes, no cleavage.
As long as it's, you know, not inappropriate.
Absolutely, no burning, no slant, yeah.
But here, I think uh, if if Dana is saying, is Dana right?
Yes, sir.
If Dana is saying that uh somebody came to her class and she's in control of that class for whatever period of time, if she deems that inappropriate, I think the board, the faculty and everybody should support that. Because if you don't, you.
If we can't, if we can't police this, then how are we gonna police free dress?
We can police it anyway.
I mean, that's.
It's a lot easier.
Even with that.
You can't.
I would just couldn't with that.
I did too, yeah. Even with that, you can't show your midriff. And you can't show your cleavage. Brady, no cleavage.
That was already. Look, what I'm saying is though, if you can't, if you can't enforce this.
Well, you ain't gotta worry about enforcing that if it's free dress.
Well, they can.
You gotta enforce everything it is.
No, you don't. That's what she said, it's already with the.
Mr. President.
Well, to be careful, we're.
We got a motion to second on the table. Kayla, we need a real call.
Like, the the motion is to.
Let's be clear on what the motion, all right, let's be clear on what the motion is.
To redo the whole dress code policy.
That's what the letter where.
Right.
Whatever y'all want, I I'll put it out there.
But you have to say it.
Well, Nick, you say what you want. Y'all, again. You you guys know I'm not afraid to do any of it. But what I'm saying is I don't want to go to the extreme because I want to be done with all of it. But if you guys have some flexibility that's there, I'm okay with that. So however you want to word it, as long as we go back and redesign the current policy, uh, put it in, um, you know, uh, I guess into the twenty twenty-five version, what it should be, I don't, I'm trying to get my words right. But if we can just redefine uh and redesign, redefine, redesign, uh, you know, the current Calipar School Board uh dress code policy for twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and it doesn't have to go into effect immediately. You know, we can, because we're gonna have to iron out, you know, a few things. Uh, but I would like as much representation from each school, principals specifically. Because uh, I want you guys to hear that what you do, you're gonna have the backing of everybody that's involved.
So what you're saying is whatever we pass, if if we come to it, we still gotta give them sixty days before we can put it forward. And we can do it in the middle of the year.
We can do it January.
And we do it in the middle of the year.
Can we?
Okay, so my concern here is I don't want parents to go out this summer and buy uniform shirts if they're gonna be able to wear what they're wearing right now. Like, if if my kids can wear his Beatles shirt, you know, or his, and and I've got one who's gonna wear Billy Joel and Beatles and one who's gonna wear Spartan every single day, it's a T-shirt with jeans. I'd be willing to bet that um there is somebody somewhere who has told a kid of that this debate is going on right now. And I bet you every kid in college will perish right now and tell their moms, don't buy me a uniform, I may wear free dress every day. Oh, yeah, I don't think getting the word out is gonna be a problem once it gets.
Baron, you not for free dress?
I mean, if 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 the faculty feels like they can enforce a free day, I'm for that. I I'm for what you guys want, not what I want sitting here as a policymaker. Uh, I've done it for thirty-two years and I haven't worked, so I'm looking at something else now, which is what you guys.
We got three principals here.
Right, yeah. Kayla.
What do y'all think?
Melissa.
Kayla?
I haven't huddled up with my taints up here.
Yeah, I like that. Nick, you, Nick, you've been a freshman. You've been a freshman.
They have a. I, 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 yes. I I think there's got to be parameters and and but I think that um it would make a lot of people happier to not have to police the, all the different colors and stuff if it is and you can just, I mean, people do it all the time.
Right.
They, and they have dress code policies in schools that have free dress. You know, it's fine.
We had a dress code policy prior to.
Absolutely, and my dress code policy was you couldn't wear shorts. You had to wear long pants, you know, and no midriff, no, I mean.
I will say this comment, we did have a huddle, but I will say that kids actually are happier in free dress but with that, so how we got them to work for certain things because they wanna wear, they wanna be able to express themselves a little bit in their personality.
Well, I feel like it's definitely gonna help with morale.
Just like, just like the cell phone.
And maybe we can improve attendance.
And as someone who just said, my phone is blowing up right now with people who say the virtual world is screaming no uniforms at everyone.
Well, I'm getting text messages myself. But but again, but again, I'm not worried about those text messages. I'm worried about the classroom and what you guys have to go through on the day.
I can honestly tell you, like, I've had kids dropped off in the morning and the person that, you know, got them out of the car, you know, went to the teacher later and was like, hey, did you send them to the office, they were in free dress? And they're like, oh, no, I hadn't paid attention. You know, like, I'm busy doing, I'm teaching, I haven't even paid attention to the fact that their clothes is not.
And that's what our focus should be, educating our kids.
And honestly, they're not gonna learn any differently in a T-shirt that says the Beatles and blue jeans than they would in a polo shirt. You know, and you have some children that's gonna love their bow ties and their nice colored shirts.
That don't wear.
That would be weird every day.
But I, I think with strong parameters that is.
Yes.
That says, like Ms. McCann said, we, no midriff, we don't wear the little biker shorts, even in elementary level.
Leggings.
Leggings, uh, yoga pants, you can put.
And those are already.
In.
Those are already for free dress days.
That's right.
Leggings, jogging pants, no, you know.
Go on, real, go on.
So free dress, free dress, all here. There you go, Baron. Free dress, right, all this, that's all we have, free dress, I'm good.
Well, and too, our free dress.
I'm ready for this, both of us, twenty-five minutes.
Having to follow a specific policy on their free dress day.
So you're gonna re- re- buy up your motion to say free dress day, free dress then?
Let's redefine and redesign.
Redefine and redesign, we are the same. I like it.
So just to put Dana on the spot here, because I never, Ralph and I used to go round and round because I did not understand uniforms.
But I came from a K-five space and I never called a parent. I I didn't allow anybody to call parents about dress code because I just wanted kids there. But Ralph told me I didn't understand because high school's different. So I just wanna put our secondary folks kinda on the spot here and just say, is free dress every day, do you think it's gonna make your life miserable?
I do not.
And I think that's all.
So I'll be there.
Because you don't care what color it is anymore.
Correct.
Right, I, right, I honestly, nine out of ten kids are going to dress exactly as they should and you're not gonna have to worry about it. Are you gonna have to tell a girl occasionally? Uh-uh, probably, or you're gonna have to tell a young man occasionally? Yes, you are, but for the most part, I don't think you're. I I think it's gonna, it would actually eliminate a lot of problems.
Because you're told, this is what you're supposed to do, it's black and white, this is what you're supposed to do.
And that's what I'm gonna do.
And and that's where your issue is coming in at.
But Dana, you would like to have the flexibility inside of your classroom that if you saw something or you deemed it inappropriate, to have that authority to deal with that, right?
Correct.
I just, I just wanna ask one question. Why did we go to uniforms to begin with?
Well, because when we had a lot of, uh, again, the camera's on, so I can't say it, but, you know, we had a lot of people that was talking about uh safety, uh security, uh, all of this stuff that was happening at Columbine, they wanted to be able to identify with, uh, you know, everybody having the same stuff on. You had uh Brian Callis family that was able to afford this, you had somebody else's family that was able to support this. So uh, they tried to put everybody pretty much on the same uh starting block, which you really don't do that other than a psychological standpoint because you know who is and who's not. Uh, you're not gonna eliminate those problems, but what I I do know you can do is make it easier in the classroom so y'all can teach. That's where I'm at now, which is why I'm willing to get rid of what we've had in the past. So I'm ready to vote on this uh thirty minute motion that we've had.
All right, let's clarify what the motion is.
So I need to pull mine back out?
No, no, you can leave your other.
We're gonna vote on this one first and then we vote on yours.
Get what you want, re- re- redefine.
We have free dress.
With boundaries.
Okay. Nick, you okay with that?
The boundaries are the same thing that is is free dress day.
Yeah.
I mean, can we say that?
Kayla, don't just pull AI.
So basically, we're going to do away with the uniform, do away with what we're calling a uniform policy. And we're going to allow students to dress as they please within a certain dress code with boundaries.
No profanity.
Absolutely.
And that's already.
Yes.
Y'all okay with that?
Y'all, y'all are good with that?
Okay, Melissa?
Because that's.
And I second that.
Kayla, you gotta hold your, you know, your pride up, so we need to.
I did, I held it up.
Kayla stole one in, she's gotta hold it up.
We're gonna vote.
All right, I got it.
All right, let's get a vote. Let's get a vote.
Baron made the motion, Gary made the second. Okay, Randy Rents.
Well, re- reread what we're.
Redefine and redesign the Calipar School Board dress code policy for twenty-five, twenty-six school year to, I don't have the exact word. But to be, to eliminate, when I type these things, I forget if you can write.
To eliminate uniforms.
And entertain Mr. Rents.
And allow students to wear regular clothes within boundaries. Is that dress code policy?
You okay with that?
I'm okay with that as long as we're gonna, as long as we're gonna meet as a committee.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
As soon as.
So the policy, well.
Yeah, next week.
Um, I'm at superintendent conference next week. I will be back on Friday, I can do Friday, I can do Friday, no, I'm back on.
Because the following week I'll be out.
When do I come back?
Thursday, we're out.
We're out on June nineteenth. Okay, so let's look at it.
We'll be back on Friday.
Uh, Maria, Maria and I will be out the following week.
Yeah, so Friday I'll be here.
Okay, we can meet anytime Friday, June twentieth.
We have Maria's meeting, Maria, Maria's meeting at some point that day. She just sent the invite.
Oh, we do, at ten thirty.
So we can do, I was at uh twelve, one.
We can do a twelve o'clock, yeah. How about eleven o'clock?
Well, I mean, I'm okay with it.
Let's do eleven o'clock, Friday, June twentieth for any policy member or board member who wants to come, any um educator or whatever, to help us set the boundaries for our.
Yes, as many people as possible.
Basically, we're gonna be like, what are free dress day?
Right, and Nick, if if uh those who are coming can just come with uh the right heart to do the right things rather than emotions and all that other stuff, I think we can get uh, you know, this done pretty quick because there's gonna be somebody who disagree, but at the end of the day, I think what I'm trying to do is make it easier inside of the classroom. So if we can keep that focus in mind, maybe we can stick to that. Uh, and if Rand, I mean, if you wanna add anything else to it, I'm okay. Uh, I just want the faculty to be able to do what they say they can't do, which is, and if the superintendent's okay with that, uh, I'm always willing to.
So Baron made a motion.
We got a motion, we got a second. All right, go ahead.
Be June twentieth to set the boundaries. All right, Randy Rents.
Yes.
Boeckardt?
No.
Melinda Vought?
Oh, yeah.
Absent, sorry. Baron Glass?
I don't know.
Hey, I I'm already got bullets being shot every day. I got that all.
Johnny Fallon?
Yes.
Well, that's six out of seven.
All right. So do we still need to go on to one where I put this out there and we just drop it out?
Drop it out.
That's good.
Well, then, I'm sorry for beating you up.
No, he doesn't.
All right, wait, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just.
Sorry, that's.
Back in the superintendent.
All right, all right, all right. Let's keep voting on it, let's vote in the next. Here's what we're gonna do, we're gonna move up the uh resolution on uh, on the EFID. Uh, EFID.
Yeah, or no, um.
To I, we're gonna sit down at I right.
You picked a bad line.
Good, I've been witnessing history.
You are, absolutely, you are.
Okay, uh, item I is on the EFID and John Up, Hardy Andrews is here from our, uh, partner, Colleen Udel out of the halls.
And I thought that was Jake Lamb right from TV eight, uh. I'm sorry, man.
Nick, did you wanna talk about EFID or?
I'm happy to.
Yeah, go right in.
Yeah, so uh EFID is a special um entity created by statute that every parish has, you just have to activate it. So this first resolution is to activate it and put. What does it stand for? Uh, educational facilities improvement industry, which is kind of a misnomer because it's, while it focuses on facilities in the title, it's basically, they can use the funds for any lawful purpose that a school board can use the funds for. So it's, it's really got a lot more use than just for facilities. Um, the first resolution is activating it and setting the parameters. So you've got five board members that, like, because it is a separate board underneath the school board, you have five board members that are appointed there.
Let me ask a question then, Nick, because I I have a problem with appointed boards. This is not gonna be set up like uh what we're dealing with without going off into it, where the authority and what 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 authority would the appointed board have?
That's a very good question. So the way we've set this up, uh, once you activate it, they will have to adopt bylaws. Um, we will have crew drafted bylaws for numerous, for a handful of others like this. And the way they've always been drafted is that any decision that is made by the EFID board is not effective until the school board approves.
That's all I want.
Yeah. So that's how it's set up. It'll be a five member board. Uh, this first resolution sets who those folks are, uh, how to appoint anyone if there's uh ever, you know, an absence or an interim position. Um, and just basically tracks the statute for setting it up.
So they they are, they are four year, six year term?
Six year term.
Six year term. Now, let me ask you this, uh, I have a problem with it being six years as appointed board when you have an elected board at four years, so. when you have an elected board at four years, so.
It's a statute, the statute requires six years.
For an appointed board? That don't make no sense.
It's, it's, it's a little different, it really is, yeah.
Yeah, that, okay, well.
What is the county state law?
Yeah, well, let me ask this, uh.
We can't vote that in.
Are there avenues, uh, I guess, that a person could be removed within the six years?
Yeah, yes, and there, there's, there's, uh, in the statute, there, in that section of sections, there's ways to remove an individual other than having them resign.
Because I, I would assume based on, uh, ethics, that they are at this point acting as a public servant, so they would be bound to the same laws that we are.
You're correct.
And, and they, Nick, I guess we probably, if you hadn't, uh, David, uh, expressed that to them because their life changes now. What, what they normally would be able to do, that's off limits now because they are acting as a public servant, uh, with regards to, uh, you know, certain things, certain deals that may have gone on then, they wouldn't be involved in that, right?
Uh, no, thank God, they, they basically have the same status every public servant.
So what I'm saying is they need to know that, I mean, they're limited to certain things now because they fall under that public servant, uh, statute.
They can't pay grass.
Right. So you, you guys have a standard form that you use throughout, uh, the state?
Yes, I mean, with the board, some people wanna do larger boards, uh, five is the one, the last one, most recent one I did was like that and it's worked very well.
You think five is okay?
Uh, yeah, I do. You, you get too many sometimes. Five's a good number and it's, you've got community involvement, you've also got involvement of folks in the school district and on the school.
Nick, we've already accepted, uh, uh, chosen our board, right?
That's the next resolution. So this first one just sets the parameters, uh, of who the, who is composed, what the board makeup is and, uh, how they're moved and, and the various things, and basically just, I mean, signed the statute. So that's the first resolution we're going on.
I make a motion that, uh, whatever.
Whatever, whatever, whatever motion.
Approval of the resolution.
I second it.
Call it fair?
Man, don't, don't, don't think I'm crazy, I know what I'm doing, I'm just having.
I have no doubt, no doubt whatsoever.
Alright, that's amazing.
I got my small friends out.
So now we're the Louisiana compliance back up to.
Jay, back up Jay, I and Jay have been.
Oh?
Jay's gonna be your new.
I am actually appointing the board.
Resolution to appoint a board director for the Collebar School Board, EBF, I, improve the district.
I make a motion to.
Do you see, do you see the names here? Do we need to read those out loud?
Probably wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
And, uh, Ms. Johnny, in your motion, can you add that, uh, at each, uh, beginning of six-year term that, uh, the board president, uh, at least set the expectation that the Collebar School Board, and this is not just now, this is from henceforth, uh, that we have an expectation, Brandon, whatever that expectation is with regards to them serving on the board for the parish, uh, legitimacy and all of those, those other kinda things. I just have an issue with appointed boards not being directed by the actual board itself, so if we could just add that in on it.
We can put that in the bylaws.
We can put that in the bylaws, yeah.
Yeah, and, and you can word it how you wanna word it.
Yeah, we can, we can work that into the bylaws, which we adopted at the first EFID meeting.
So I make a motion.
So for this resolution, though, I did want to, to note that the five positions, um, that were just passed are the superintendent, the business manager, uh, the, a board member of the, uh, school board, vice president, and then two community members, and so that's what you just passed. And so identifying who those people are now, it would be me as the superintendent, David as the business manager, Maria as the vice president of the school board, and then our two community members are Reggie Rockamore and Lauren Young. And they're both residents of and voters in Collebar.
My question on that is, see, a new board comes in in twenty seven.
What if I'm not the vice president?
That's why you set these parameters.
Could they actually change who they would want to serve, uh, after the six-year term is up? Cause see, they'll come on, I don't, I don't wanna do something to hinder another board after me, I guess is what I'm saying.
So my que- use your question that if in twenty seven you get a new board on and, uh, Ms. Bass is no longer the vice president and there's another vice president, would she still be on that board?
No, 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 uh, what if?
What if the new board wants a different?
The new board wants their point.
They, you, you could do that. I mean, again, that's, I think that's a bylaw issue, but again, ultimately, ultimately, it all, bylaws can be formed and they have always been formed when, when we've done it, that the school board has the ultimate.
And I'm not trying to make it complicated, I just wanna make sure, you know, everybody understand, again, appointed boards sometime go in and think they have more power structure than the actual elected board, and I, I wanna try to eliminate that because that causes problems when, especially when it's not done, right, and you have somebody that's out there doing, uh, you know, whatever, let's say somebody got DW out, you, you want them to serve on the board, I think somebody should have that flexibility to, you know, uh, add or take away.
And again, you, the, you as the school board will have the ultimate, so they can't take any action unless it's approved by you. So they can take whatever action they want, but then you nullify it at the next meeting? Yes, there, there will be ways to, uh, change that up in the future if you also choose as the school.
You ready to vote?
Yeah.
If we get a second?
I don't think so. I give a motion. The motion's already.
Oh, uh, yeah, I did, I made the motion.
Nick, and everybody in contact.
I'll second it.
Alright, Ms. Fallon, motion, and Gary seconded. All in.
Alright, alright. So now we can go, is the Louisiana compliance questionnaire for official twenty-five, uh, year audit?
Uh, yes, uh, item eight, uh, y'all sign this, or we, y'all approve this every year, uh, the compliance questionnaire that we have to give to the auditors, they're governmental and you have to do that before an audit. It tells the auditor that, you know, what we are in compliance with, what we are not in compliance with, we're in compliance with everything, uh, so it's kind of a, uh, formality in our case, so, uh, that's all it is.
Okay.
And y'all have to make a motion.
It's gonna be roll call?
Yes.
We're just making a motion, I'm second.
Motion to.
Motion to.
I, I make a motion to accept the.
I second.
Okay, I'm a roll call, uh, Randy Rents?
Yes.
Boeckardt? Ms. Melinda?
Yes.
Mr. Glass?
Yes.
And Bass?
Yes.
Mr. Castle?
Yes.
Ms. Fallon?
Yes.
Alright, thank y'all.
Moves on to F, which is a resolution to set the thirteenth check payout at, uh, one million, one hundred thousand, to be paid out on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, that, that's pretty much it. Uh, in the past thirty years, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, we've paid out one-point-one billion. This is doing the same exact thing, so, yeah, somebody checked Will Berry, I mean, everybody checked Will Berry a little bit, uh, just by, by the nature of calculation, but, uh, essentially, they're gonna be getting about the same amount they got prior year, so.
Well. Uh, I make a motion to set the thirteenth check payout at one-point-one. Be paid out on the thirty, June thirty.
Do you have a motion?
Roll call?
No.
We're doing only one?
Uh. Yes.
Motion passed. Alright, now we're moving on to G, uh, resolution to transfer one-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and thirty-eight cents from sales tax zero-zero-two to general fund zero-zero-one to cover a portion of retiring health insurance premiums for fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay, uh, for each of the two bond, uh, not, uh, tax resolutions that were passed in seventy-nine and ninety-seven, they're, they're each worth one percent. It gives correct latitude to the board, the board can pass, uh, the, uh, the taxes authorized for salaries and benefits, retiring OGB, health insurance premiums as a benefit. This will pay down some of the cost on that, uh, on item G, you can see how this is in the past, what, five or six years, for one million, one sixteen, now we're one million, three seventy-five, that will offset some of that cost.
Is this the only option, David, that we have, or this is just what you recommend?
Uh, just what we can.
We use, we needed this to help balance the objectives.
Yes. Well, it'll not be as. It is.
Move it in the right direction.
Yeah.
And it still goes to the employees, it's just looking at their retirement, even though it may be thirty years for some of them.
Exactly.
I'll make a motion and we accept this.
I'll second.
Call it fair?
Uh.
So now we move to K. Eight, oh, eight, just for your budget of minutes.
I'd rather move to K.
Just for your twenty-five.
So we'll, we'll stick with H. Um, one of my sacred rules is never to have legal pages, but you have two legal pages, we'll, we'll do those two first. Uh, the second page is just all historical data, the first page is where we really need focus. Uh, first column, A, is the original budget from September that we passed, that A, that has a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. The revised budget has a, uh, deficit of seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand dollars, so we improved under seven-two-thousand dollars, of which a hundred-and-forty-three of that was what we just passed, uh, on the sales tax, uh, salaries. Uh, some of the big changes, uh, line four, revenue sharing, I'm, I'm sorry, high cost, MFP, uh, was a decrease of ten-hundred-seven-thousand dollars. Overall revenues decreased a hundred-thousand dollars, uh, largely because of that. Regular salaries on line eighteen came in right at budget, uh, so we did very good there. Uh, line nineteen and twenty, substitutes, those both moved favorable, uh, thirty-two-thousand dollars, uh, better than what was expected, eleven thousand for non-teachers. So we expect to spend a hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand for teachers for subs, we only spent a hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand, so, so that's great. Uh, total salaries and benefits, uh, we had a budget originally of one, uh, a thirteen-million, three-hundred-nine-thousand, that's been revised to thirteen-million, eighty-five-thousand, so that's a two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-dollar improvement there. And I won't skip a bunch of lines and get down to the red line, the red, the shaded red item, that's a hundred-and-forty-three-thousand dollars that you just passed, that's where it's coming in. And, uh, a couple of expenditures that therefore are showing as a favorable change of two-hundred-seventy-two-thousand dollars from the original budget. So we're, again, showing the seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-dollar deficit, that will reduce our fund balance from six-million, three forty-two that we started with on June thirtieth, two thousand and four, to five-million, six fourteen, as of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, projected.
So David, three or four years ago, what, what was the fund balance then?
Uh, it was.
Twenty-elevens?
Around seven million, when we first started, so. And that's the, um, revised budget for fund one, general fund, and then the short page, uh, that was on top of that, uh, that is all funds shown, uh, chunks that we have. Uh, the ones that changed are shaded in that faded color, none of them changed negatively as far as, you know, you think my whole account, I really need to make sure y'all understand that, uh, I, I mean, everything was kinda nickel and dime, uh, changes, uh, a lot on grant or grant awards that changed, uh, one, two grants that we did not think that we're gonna get, uh, Janice Martinez made sure. That, uh, that was left over, S R money, that was fifty-thousand dollars, go back to them, so shout out to her on that.
Alright, I'll second.
Call it fair?
Uh.
Alright, financial update, is that?
That's, that's, but we, I'll answer that question, we're not, we'll have a final question, we kinda just did it, so, but, uh, item K, yes, uh. The, Randy, do you wanna talk about it, or do you want me to talk about it, I don't care, this on Hurricane Creek?
Hurricane Creek, uh, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Hurricane Creek is, uh, has, or a police jury has a contract out, uh, asking for bidders on improving Hurricane Creek. And from what I understand, they have two major landing areas, it's, it's a four-mile stretch running kinda from Grayson to kinda behind Max, am I right on that? No?
Dollar Store.
Dollar Store, thank you.
That's all.
So anyway, uh, that, that area, and there's two kind of main landing areas or staging areas for, for anybody that wants to bid on. We have, we're kind of in the middle and we're not a staging area, but it would be a benefit, uh, for a cooperative endeavor agreement, if we were to get with anybody that wins a bid, that we take out part of it, or take out all the trees that are behind the stadium, uh, of, uh, Collebar High School. And for, for that purpose of them moving in and out of their equipment out in the creek. And in doing so, they will have to.
There's also a, uh, a deal that changed on there, there's anywhere some made to, or loads of dirt that has to be cut out of the creek and deposited somewheres.
Okay.
If the school board needs a, a low swag or a, something built up, there's no sense hauling it ten miles to get rid of it when you can dump it right here to the school.
Isn't there a pond or something back behind the stadium that needs to be?
It is. And if the school board would. If the school board find out if that's classified as a wetland, there's not much you can do with the pond. But if it's not classified as a wetland, you could fill in some of the pond or, or, you know, I mean, this is just options that y'all could use on leftover dirt and, uh, the creek bank, and that's gotta be the creek bank, and that's gotta be. Yeah, it's gonna come around the back of that little shear, that's where the creek is.
Well, the junior high that.
Come around the back of that little shear, that's where the creek is.
Well, the junior high that, 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 that is just a ditch that, that's not part of Hurricane.
Or add to the stadium side a little more, it can drain one way or another, but it don't have to make the full loop.
I just know that it's dark for those junior high kids are walking back and forth and then they've got the trees and all the little critters and snakes and stuff like that, which never happened, but, you know, but I don't know if that would be a, am I wrong, with it being dark, with the kids walking back and forth there, I don't know.
The energy, the energy company put up, the light company put up, the light, so it's not as dark as it was, it is kinda, so it's not as dark as it was, it is kinda sketchy there, but, sketchy there, but.
I didn't know since you were doing.
I think Gary did. But, yeah, I'm just saying, I, I got a little leeway here or there and don't mind helping our school board, and while I'm there, y'all doing me a favor and it, and it stimulates us to it until.
Read that, that's, that's the resolution taken over today.
Yes, sir, I sure would, Lee. And I sent you a text on that dirt.
Ah, if I did, I didn't read it.
Do we have any more questions on this? Bill and Brown, are you all, you okay? I mean, I'm clueless.
I don't have, yeah, I don't have any questions.
Need a motion?
I make a motion that we, um, you know, win the this endeavor or whoever gets the bids, that's basically what we're doing?
If they, if, if the other, if the.
If they agree. Yeah, if, if anybody else gets, gets a motion, yes.
I second that.
Call it fair?
Uh.
Alright, now. Hopefully I'm in order. Moving on to L, financial update?
I'm skipping that.
That's what I wish to, alright, district leaders.
Very short. Ms. Meredith?
Uh, Kathy got all the permits done this week, Fire Marshal, Health and Safety Division, everything's done, so.
They had their, actually, their first event that was open to public today, so.
It, it went really well, it was really exciting, yeah.
So what are the hours on it?
So in August, um, is where we're gonna be every single day, but it's gonna be eleven to one and it's gonna be, um, open for lunch. But if you, um, uh, if you use social media, like their Facebook page, so you can see when the pop-ups are gonna be, there's gonna be one face Wednesday and then the Thursday[1755.85] there's gonna be one face Wednesday, and then Thursday after that, too, that are open to the public.
That's next Wednesday and Thursday, or next Wednesday and the...
And the fall, one day a week, yes. Wednesday and then the next...
The next Thursday, next week.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're just working on getting laptops ready for the next year, doing maintenance on laptops, desktops, all of this stuff. Getting everybody lined up for the next year, takes all summer.
Yeah, we're just getting ready for next year.
Um, we are running summer feeding right now out of the high school, um, that goes through the month of June, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, open to any child eighteen and under, um, and then also with our CEP, our Community Eligibility Provision, which is where all the kids eat for. We, um, I was able to, like, start a new base year for this year, so we're locked in for four more years.
Y'all, that's huge.
That's awesome.
Every student will eat free for the next portion. So I just typed up a summary of all of the things that I could think of that went wrong with the evaluation, um, and how that is. Remember this year, it had to be quantified so that it was numerical, and my fifteen percent was based on third grade literacy, and that was out of a total of five possible, we ended up with a four, right, Ms. Kilpatrick? A four with literacy, and then fifteen percent is math, and we end up with a five with math, so, um, we all met our goals. No pressure. So we're excited about that, so, um, if you, um, we'll read through that and just kind of, you know, the QR code... You can easily go in and rate, and then it will put all those numbers together, and, um, that way my evaluation will be complete by the end of June.
Now, y'all know Nick is smart enough to write an evaluation so she can pass.
He's smart enough to know where my areas of efficiency were last year, and it won't remind you with the budget, so I worked really hard this year with my team to make sure that, um, that was... That's it.